The September 18th, 2023 Columbus City Council Meeting will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is posted in our meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
[beep]
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Freshhour?
Here.
Hemer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schelling?
Here.
Mayor Bolkley, the roll has been called.
Council President Schulte.
Augustine Schulte, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen. (singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bells bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening anyone in our audience would like to come forward and address the council, we'd ask that you please do come to the podium, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the September 5th, 2023 city council meeting. Item 4B, resolution number R23-121, approving the lease to hangar aircraft with Douglas J. and Randy L. Williams for hangar number 1240 southeast at Columbus Municipal Airport. The airport board recommends approval. Item 4C, resolution number R23-122, authorizing mayor to sign the municipal annual certification of program compliance 2023 to the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, Classifications and Standards. Item 4D, resolution number R23-123, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4E, finance department reports. And item 4F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. That brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing, application of Warner Construction LLC for special use permit to allow for resource extraction in an RR rural residential district. Zone located at 7014 8th Street, the planning commission recommends approval contingent on conditions being met. This item must be removed from the agenda due to an incorrect legal description, so it will come back likely next month.
So do we need to make a motion to remove and, all right?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the, that this item be removed from the, from the agenda.
Second. We have a motion, a second to remove, the application of Warner Construction. Any discussion?
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
You're sure, you're welcome to, please.
I'm John Coffey. I live at 2920 27th Street, and I own property out close to where this is. I'm just wondering what it was about.
It's a-
I missed a hearing last week and didn't realize it wasn't on the agenda today.
It will have to come before the planning commission and the city council again because of the inaccurate legal description, but it's basically, it's a permit by Warner Construction to do resource extraction at this site, so basically a sandpit.
Sandpit.
So you can come to the planning commission meeting. You'll get another notice.
Okay.
And that meeting would be the second Monday, I'm assuming, if they come together?
Well, you'll get a second notice for sure when it will be.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove this from the agenda. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, public hearing, application of Aramis Curbelo Sangue on behalf of Randy A. Lot for special use permit to allow automotive rental and sales in an MLC1 light industrial district. The zone, zone located at 2254 East 32nd Avenue, the planning commission recommends approval contingent on conditions being met.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
(inaudible)
Rick?
(inaudible)
Please come forward and-
I'm Josiah Nelson, I'm with DeVorah Claw Group in Omaha, Nebraska. We're representing Aramis in the special use permit application. I think you were asking what the contingencies. So the city, the planning commission had, sorry, the planning commission had two conditions, which was the, they want fire exit signs in the building, and then they want gravel and screening fences where they're having, where they have some cars stored. The Aramis has already got the fire exit signs put in, and the fire chief has signed off on it, and he's working with the owner of the property to get the fencing and gravel put in.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, ordinance number 23-13, approving the special use permit.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 23-13 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 23-13 by number only. Any discussion?
Do we need to have it written in there that it's based on the contingency? It's a safe-
It's included in the-
It's all-
It is.
It's already included in the ordinance, yes.
Well, that, just in the public hearing, I think we'll lose the-
You're saying it is written into the ordinance, those contingencies?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 23-13.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 23-13.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 23-13. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C, public hearing, application of Guatemex LLC doing business as Guatemex for Class C liquor license at 92523rd Street, Suite 300.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed and a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application of Guatemex for Class C liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing and forward a motion to the Nebraska Liquor Commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7C1, application of Guatemex for no Ruby Perez as manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move the application of Guatemex for no Ruby Perez as manager be approved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7D, public hearing, consider resolution authorizing purchase of the Aquatic Center property from Platte County Agricultural Society, 1783 10th Avenue.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public? Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? I guess I would ask if you want to just recap what we are doing here for the public, please.
Sure. The Columbus Aquatic Center, the city's aquatic center actually sits on Ag Park ground. About 40 years ago, the city entered into a lease agreement with Ag Park to lease that property, which the aquatic center sits on, for a dollar a year on a 99-year lease. With the changes expected out at Ag Park, we sent a request to the Ag Board requesting if we could purchase the portion of land that the, that the aquatic center sits on for the remainder of the lease, which is $60. The Ag Board agreed. The county board has some legal involvement in that, so they also approved of the, of the sale of that portion of their property to the city. So this is the purchase agreement for the same. It will go before the Ag Board on the 25th.
Any questions? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7D1, resolution number 2, R23-124, authorizing the purchase of the Aquatic Center property.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R23-124 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R23-124. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7D2, resolution number R23-125, approving the purchase agreement with Platte County Agricultural Society and the amount of $60 for the Aquatic Center property.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R23-125.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R23-125. Any discussion? I would add, I think it's fair to say that this is a mutual discussion that took place between the city and Ag, the Ag Society. With all the changes that are going on there, they felt it was also better to have this cleaned up and have this piece of property sit with the city. So this was just mutually agreed to move it forward. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7E, public hearing, property tax request for 2023, 2024.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7E1, resolution number R23-126, setting the property tax request at $6,701,493.42.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R23-126 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R23-126. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application of James Ferguson for preliminary plot of Deerfield Park Townhouse, 2nd subdivision, 38th Street, east of 26th Avenue, the planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the preliminary plot of Deerfield Park Townhouse, 2nd subdivision be approved.
Second.
You want to take a minute and redo that one?
Yeah. There you go.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plot of Deerfield Park Townhouse subdivision, 38th Street, east and 26th Avenue. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, public hearing, application of James Ferguson for final plot of Deerfield Park Townhouse, 2nd subdivision, 38th Street, east of 26th Avenue. This is continued from the August 21st, 2023 meeting. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Is there anyone here to speak against? We don't, do we? I mean, anyone here to speak against the public hearing? I'm sorry, Troy, you got ahead of me. Anyone here to speak against or for this public hearing? We have a motion to close the public hearing. Did we get a second?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B1, resolution number R23-127, approving the final plot and subdivision agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R23-127 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R23-127. Any discussion? Seeing none, I would just say it's nice to see this move forward. I know it was on the agenda a couple of different times and had, for whatever reasons, could not move forward, so it's good to see this happen. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, application of Arbak Enterprises LLC for preliminary plot of Reader subdivision, 4th Street and 9th Avenue, the planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the preliminary plot of Reader subdivision be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plot of Reback Enterprises preliminary plot for the Reader subdivision. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, extend the termination deadline for emergency medical services for Duncan Rural Fire District and Columbus Rural Fire District.
I would just like to let the public know that we are in discussions with Columbus Rural and Duncan, and things appear to be moving forward. So with that being said, these things never happen very quickly, and they shouldn't. They should make sure they're done with caution and care. That being said, we felt it was prudent to move this deadline to November 7th, which gives us ample time for all parties to, to work out any, any final things that need to happen. So with that being said, all those in favor signify. I need a motion to do such term of extension.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend the termination deadline for emergency medical services for Duncan Rural Fire District and Columbus Rural Fire District to November 7th.
We have a motion and a second to extend. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, Unico and Oxyant Pharmacy Benefit Manager repricing proposal.
Mr. Mayor, I move the proposals for Med One Pharmacy Benefit Solutions for Pharmacy Benefit Manager be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, and our pharmacy benefit manager just can bring himself right up to the podium. That was just great timing.
Perfect timing.
Yes, there was a, fortunately, there was a bad accident on 92, Day by David City there.
Sorry to hear that.
I could not get through, so. Um, yes, I'll give a brief kind of overview on how we got to this point.
Please, please give your name and address, just so we have you officially on board. Thank you.
Yes. My name's Ryan Swinton. I'm with Unico Group, which is the employee benefit consultant for the city of Columbus. And we've been evaluating the city's benefit program over the last few years. We've made a few changes, recommendations to Tammy and her team, some of those things you've implemented. One of the things we've been evaluating is the city's pharmacy benefit manager. That's the organization that provides the prescription drugs to the employees. In, in that evaluation, we took data, we de-identified any employee information from that, we sent it to some different pharmacy benefit managers that are in the space that we work with to have them run it through, those claims through their system, to tell us, okay, what would you have paid on these drugs compared to where we were at? Through that analysis, we identified some differences, but if I sum it all together, Med One was the one pharmacy benefit manager that rose to the top over the city's current program, which is through Elixir. The overall savings based on the rebates that would come back to the city to help lower the overall plan costs, thereby hoping to keep employee costs down, that, along with the discounts just at the pharmacies where they have negotiated rates, would save the city approximately $126,000. So based on that analysis, by making that change. The other thing I will note is, we did a disruption analysis, which means we're checking to make sure all the pharmacies, all the drugs that are in one network are the same as what they would be in the other. Based on the data for the last 12 months, the answer is yes. You know, medications change, so there could be something that we don't know about, you know, if something changes, but as of right now, based on the data we looked at for the past year, there'd be no disruption. So our recommendation is to go ahead and make a change. And we do that effective 1/1 of the upcoming year.
Calendar year?
Yes.
Any questions?
I'd just make one other comment, and this, this recommendation from Unico went to our employee health committee, and they recommended we move forward with this change as well.
Okay. Any council questions or comments? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that the proposal for Med One Pharmacy Benefit Solutions for Pharmacy Benefit Manager be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 13F, purchase of two pickups from the Nebraska State bid contract in the total amount of $45,248 for Public Works Department. Mr. Mayor, that the purchase of two pickups from the Nebraska State bid contract be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase of two pickups from the Nebraska State bid contract. These would be in the budget. Yes, sir. Mr. Slava?
Mayor, council, if I could, I'd like to address item 13F on the agenda. It states the total price of 40-
$45,248.
Yes, that is incorrect. The actual amount for the state bid is $95,147 for both vehicles. We've secured pricing from the fleet, fleet sales system at Husker Auto Group. That total amount for equals pickups would be $89,398. So actually, we're utilizing the bid process through the state, that means we found the cheaper units through Husker Auto Group with their fleet bidding. We can option to buy those at a cheaper rate, which, those would be $89,398 for both units on the lot, ready to go.
So do we need to change our item here to word it? Change the motion to purchase two pickups from the Husker Auto Group? Is that what you're asking?
I would believe so, that we've put that Husker Auto Group, Fleet Auto Group pricing at $89,398.
Are you good with that? Neil? So our motion needs to be purchase of two pickups from the Husker Auto Group for $89,398?
Is this in this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
This is for, this, it's in the 23, 24 budget.
Our new, our new budget, okay. All right, any other questions?
We should have to restate the motion.
Well, I think I did.
Okay, we did.
Are you, are you good with my restated motion?
Okay.
All right, I appreciate it. I also compliment you on going through the bidding process and finding a, a better option. All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
The motion on, as, the motion as stated on our screens is incorrect.
I cannot get it changed.
Right, we, we just-
We made them in.
Well, verbally, because of the verbal motion, well, she'll change that, the final minutes.
I will change it for the minutes, but I can get it in the system.
We have it on record that we are changing it.
We have a motion and a second for the purchase of two pickups from Husker Auto Group, $89,398. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item. Item thirteen G, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have comments this evening?
I do. September is suicide prevention month, so just being a person that has lost family members and friends to suicide, just awareness of bringing forth that there's resources in our community, nine-eight-eight is a good connection, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as well as a variety of other services. So, mental health is something that we all have. It is how we feel and respond to stress and emotions, is whether or not you need assistance, but we need to reduce that stigma and bring awareness so that lives are saved. And statistically, our counties that we live in around us have a fifty percent higher youth suicide attempt than the state average. So, we need to bring awareness to our youth and make sure that we have resources in place, so. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from council members? Yes, ma'am.
I have one. On Friday, September twenty-ninth, the students at St. Bonaventure School will be holding a blue, will be celebrating a blue mass for all of our police officers, firefighters, rescue workers. The mass is at eight fifteen, so all of our all of our great people are invited to be there present with our, with their families, and of course, all of you are invited as well.
Thank you. We'll put that on the calendar for all first responders. Any other comments from anyone? The mayor, I have nothing this evening. We'll move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two three dash one-two eight, adopting the schedule of fees for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of resolution number R two three dash one-two eight.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two three dash one-two eight, adopting scheduled fees for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two three dash one-two-nine, approving the agreement with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars for traffic signal analysis, two thousand twenty-three, project on Lost Creek Parkway, at the intersections of Thirty-third Avenue, Forty-Eighth Avenue, and Wilderness Road, and at the intersection of Twenty-seventh Street and Thirty-third Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to accept the resolution number R two three dash one-two-nine to be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two three dash one-two-nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R two three dash one-three-zero, approving the agreement with GIS Lab in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred for geographical information system support services.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R twenty-three dash one hundred thirty be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two three dash one-three-zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two three dash one for adopting the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four pay plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number two three dash one-four be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two three dash one-four by number only. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I will continue to have a nay vote on this. I just, the reason being is that I think this next fiscal year, to take an opportunity with the city and the council to review and assess our current model and see if the pay scale and the COLA provide the most equitable and sustainable way to be able to process that for city and council and our community. One areas that I do think, you know, looking at it, that maybe as we have those conversations is, does the council and mayor need to be included in the COLA, and what does that look like? And I think the other thing that, as I processed and thought about this, I think as a community member coming into this, we as a community need to remember that we have very highly talented and gifted city staff, and they have carried out tremendous processes and projects over the last seven-plus years that needed to be done. And those projects didn't move forward without council and citizens' approval. So, every citizen has the right to be heard in respectful way and format, and I think that it's just doing our due diligence of looking at the COLA and the pay scale, because we've done it for numerous years. I don't know how long it's been since we've maybe looked at it to see what is the best equitable way to enhance and engage our city employees and also sustainability for our citizens as well.
Very good. Right now, we're going to suspend the rules. Any other discussions in regard to that? We will, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Ordinance number two three dash one-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two three dash one-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two three dash one-four, and I am assuming, hope this would be all your feelings toward the adoption of this ordinance, correct? Yes, ma'am. Alright, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item fifteen B, ordinance number two three dash one-five, adopting the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend rules and read ordinance number two three dash one-five by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two three dash one-five by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Ordinance number two three dash one-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two three dash one-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two three dash one-five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Before I gavel that close, I just have a couple of comments on the budget that I feel are pertinent. This year's budget of eighty-nine million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars represents the things that we expect to happen in our upcoming fiscal year, October one through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This budget covers our full-time hundred and ninety-two employees, along with numerous part-time and seasonal employees. This budget allows for the continued growth of our community while maintaining those vital services that our citizens expect. Police, fire, E-nine-one-one, library, street maintenance, snow removal, water, wastewater services, parks, and rec, and more. To further enhance the needs of our citizens and add amenities that are asked for and expected, this budget includes over four-point-eight-seven million in discretionary funds. All of these items will come before the council and the public for discussion and input before anything is approved. Finally, this budget allows for the loaner of our levy, point oh-two-two-six. Our levy went from point three-one-five-one-eight-six per one-hundred of assessed valuation to point two-nine-two-six-one-seven. This took the city's share of a hundred thousand dollars on a home value from three hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents to two hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents. And although valuations increased, the city tried its best to minimize that impact while maintaining services and growth. Let me close by putting this in the simplest terms possible. Your city budget is eight-point-nine million dollars. We are asking for six-point-seven million in property tax money. Your property tax dollars represent seven-point-five percent of your city's budget in its entirety. I want to thank staff for all their time, their efforts that went into making this happen. I thank you all for this evening. Meeting adjourned.